For the Nebraska State Board of Education. The May State Board work session will now come to order. I'd like to point out that our esteemed board member Patricia Tim contacted me in advance to let me know she would be absent from today and tomorrow's meetings due at a national meeting involving early childhood development. So we will move on. Denise, please call the roll.
Lisa Fricki.
Present.
Patsy Co. Johns.
Here.
Deborah Neary.
Here.
Robin Stevens.
Here.
Rachel Wise.
Present.
John Whittsle.
Here.
Patricia Tim.
Maureen Nichols.
Here.
And Commissioner Bloomsdett.
Present.
Seven present, one absent.
Thank you very much Denise. Information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of this room on the south side of the door. Live web streaming will be available through the State Board of Education website. Board members, please engage your microphones before speaking and turn them off when you're done speaking. And please, turn off your cell phones at this time. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the Commissioners' Report and Agenda Overview. Commissioner, I understand that we are going to move items 7.7 D and E up to your Commissioners' Report, sir.
Yeah, we're gonna move. I guess it's 3.7 D and E, which is the Priority School Process piece. So we'll go ahead and start with that. And you'll have to remind me to come back and do the rest of my report later for you. So I'll go ahead and invite, I believe, Lane Carr and Shirley Vargas are gonna lead this effort. Luke County, I believe, is gonna be kinda first up, and in baseball terms, Santee would be on deck in that case. So I'll turn it over to them. A little context, just for everybody's sake, obviously, with state law as it is, we, one of the things we do as part of our accountability system is identify priority schools. We've made it part of kind of the tradition of an annual report from the schools. We do very much thank all of the school officials for being here. As part of that presentation, the committee had a chance to do that. I don't know if Rachel wanted to say anything about the committee process before they start.
Yeah, thank you Commissioner. And I want to thank both our schools for being here today, Luke County and for Santee. And this morning at our committee meeting, we had a chance to get an update, which we greatly appreciated, the update and the discussion. And this gives the full board a chance to get that update and have a discussion on the progress being made in our priority schools. And again, we appreciate the two priority schools that are here today. They were our first in our beginning process, and I would say we've learned a lot together. And that's, I think, an important aspect of this process, is not just what's happening in the school, but what's happening with our work in a collaborative process between the Department of Education, ESUs, and our school districts. So thank you for being here.
Great. Thank you. So, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Shirley Vargas. I am the Student Achievement Coordinator.
And I'm Lane Carr, the Director of Accountability in AQuest.
Excellent. So what we want to share with you today are some priority school recommendations. So like Commissioner Blooms said, mention what our priority schools do at the end of a school year is provide an update of their priority school progress plan. And some objectives that we have here for you today is just revisit the statutory elements around priority schools, outline some recommendations that we're making for you today, for your consideration, to then take action on in June, and then answer any questions that you may So really, to begin, we have a priority school statutory requirement here. Priority schools are designated from the lowest performance level at the time of designation, which for us is needs improvement. As a result of a recent legislative change, we have no less than three schools to be identified as priority schools. And schools that are designated as priority schools shall remain with that designation until it's removed by our State Board. Another result of a recent legislative change is that after a third consecutive year, the State Board shall reevaluate the progress plan of a school to determine if a significant revision should be made, an entirely new plan should be developed, or if an alternative administrative structure is warranted.
So just to review where we have been over the past few years with priority schools. So we know that we had Druid Hill exit priority status in 2017, and that we have continued our work with Santee Middle School and Luke County Elementary School. Around this time last year, we also added Skyler Central High School into the priority school work.
So for our recommendation for Luke County Elementary is to remove Luke County Elementary from priority school status. And we have three rationales for this work, for this movement, excuse me. The first is to, we have seen an improvement in student achievement outcomes, which is around the quantitative data, which Lane, as well as Superintendent Rupert, will discuss in a moment, as well as we've tracked and have seen the implementation of their progress plan with fidelity, and will demonstrate some qualitative measures as well. And we've also seen some key leadership moves around enlisting the support of their ESU, as well as ensuring that they have an instructional coach and elementary principal to support this work at that level.
Great. So just to begin with the more quantitative side of things, we've been really proud to show the work, and it's a testament to the work that has been done by the leadership, the school board, that we have a member here today as well, and then the teachers that are in the classrooms every day. So looking at our NEP data, this is a snapshot from the Nebraska education profile, and we want to just highlight that Luke County Elementary is now a great school, and that the entire district has been classified as a great school. You also see that their English Language Arts proficiency at the elementary is at the 80% level, and we had a really great comparison chart of schools that are similar to Luke County, similar in size and demographic, and we see that they're knocking it out of the field. So they're doing a great job, and we've just continued to see that upward trend. And the same is present for mathematics, where we have a 70% proficiency rate at the elementary school level.
So just to remind you of what the priority school progress plan, how it's organized, it's organized around three levers for highly effective schools. The first lever being clear compelling direction that focuses on a desired future state for the school, the student and staff culture, so creating a place of learning and a warm environment for parents and children, and the staff, and finally instructional leadership, so refocusing a principal so that there is an instructional leader and continuously doing observations and coaching of their educators in their school. So what I want to share with you is that the qualitative review is an annual process that every priority school engages in, and the rubric that is used to measure that progress comes from our Nebraska Framework for Continuous Improvement, and it is used to assess the level and progress made to achieve the improvement goals. So you can see not evident yet, that demonstrates no or limited implementation, from moving then to emerging, which is supportive or partial, to operational, which is systematic, to highly functional, which is consistent, purposeful, and sustainable. So specifically for Luke County, the rationale for the qualitative review of their measured progress to remove them from priority status is that we can see a shift from 2016 when they entered into priority status to 2019, their goals have increased, right, in terms of the level of implementation and sustainability in their school. And just really quickly, a goal is what the school is attempting to achieve, right? So the schools here have moved from 25% in emerging to 75% operational goals to then an additional 25% of goals that are highly functional, which is where we want to see a lot of that movement. And strategies, so every goal then has a subset of strategies. Those strategies are then our key moves, actions, activities, that the school and school community must put in place in order to achieve the goals that they have set out. And what we see here is a movement from 2016 and 2018, when they had their priority school plan in place for two years, moved from emerging, operational, highly functional, to the majority of those strategies their current school year, in highly functional. Over 50% of their strategies are highly functional, which is where we want to see that going. So we want to now turn it over to Superintendent Rupert here, who can go ahead and introduce his team, and then give us just a brief update of any data that he'd like to share.
Okay, first of all, I have Sarah Sortum here, our school board, our local school board vice president, Kim Barron, our elementary principal and instructional coach, and Ken Sheets, our secondary principal. And also works with the high school and the elementary and the observation in working with the strategies of working. And so with that being said, first of all, I'd like to thank you for inviting us here and giving us the opportunity to come and share with you all the great things we feel are going on, have been gained at Luke County during the past three years. So I appreciate that. And so I would just highlight some of the things that Lane and Shirley have mentioned quickly, and it's talking about, first of all, in the NSGAS, or the NOTNISA. We don't have the data back from this year, but going back to the spring of 2018, NDE puts out a list of similar schools that we compare to, and in Language Arts, from that list that NDE puts out, we're number one, and math in that group, we're number two. In the demographic area around Luke County and all the elementary schools around there, we're number one, again, in Language Arts, and number one in Mathematics. So I think that's shown a lot of growth in that area. Dealing with maps, on the map system of assessment and diagnostic assessment, we do it three times a year, so that we can, again, look and trace students and help plan for those. And looking at the elementary school from the fall of this year to spring of this year, every class is either sustained or gained in growth to match their growth in both reading and math. Working with the MTSS system, looking at the growth of students and goals for students, we do that also three times a year in working that. And the idea is to go from tier three to tier one. And as of the last testing period, sampling period of that, every student in the elementary has moved from, excuse me, I won't say every student, I will say that sampling in your packet or in the packet we gave was from kindergarten in reading, and fifth grade and read, every one of them was over into tier one. Reading was a goal we had, and was a goal, improvement goal. Moving on then to next year's, and setting the plan, working with the progress plan or school improvement plan, we'll have an emphasis on math for next year. Shirley talked about the three levers. The first one, clear and compelling direction, and the rating we had was operational in that lever. The second one, the student staff culture, repeating again, that was operational, and instructional leadership was highly functional. So this shows a lot of growth, so now it's, you know, we are confronted with where do we go from here? So we have next steps to go and move into. Of course, the first one is the improvement plan, and looking at the improvement plan and the progress plan we have, and marrying those two together, that that's part of it. We'll be coming up to our five-year evaluation, external visit in a couple of years. We want to make sure that this rolls in smoothly from what we're doing in the progress plan to the school improvement plan. We have other things designed, said our math, excuse me, reading was our emphasis this past year, math will be our emphasis coming up, we'll be introducing new math curriculum in 712. Again, we felt the elementary teachers putting a new reading curriculum to match that, giving them a little time off, we won't plan on implementing the math curriculum in elementary school till the year after that. So that's our plan for those things moving down the road. I guess if there are questions, I was told it had four to five minutes, we've covered a lot of material.
We do have one more quick slide we'll share with you really quickly, and that is just some next steps, just to underscore what Superintendent Rupert has mentioned, really thinking about the sustainability aspect, knowing that while they may be undergoing some personnel shifts, we want to make sure that this work is in person dependent, but actually system dependent. And what they're focusing on is really instruction, ensuring that they're having someone there to support that work moving forward. Like he mentioned, their accreditation site visit is coming up in 2021, so ensuring that they're sustaining this work for the remainder, the remaining couple of years and forward. They've secured their ESU involvement to support with the continued professional development around mathematics and instructional materials adoption. With that, we will go ahead and take any questions or anything.
Are there any questions? Robin?
Hello Rusty. It's good to see you.
Robin, how are you?
And congratulations. I think that's the main thing that we'd like to share with you, and especially your school districts.
These are the people that really do the work.
Yeah, neat. From any of you, but only one of you, because I know John's got the timer on me over there, what was the best part of this process? If you think about the priority school, and what was the best part of this entire process? Anybody? But I'm only gonna let one of you talk. They're looking to you Rusty.
Yeah, okay. From my office, as being the superintendent, the best part of it was seeing the community, the school board, and the staff all get behind an opportunity that, when it first was announced, was not, didn't come across as very positive, but they had the attitude of joining together and making it positive, say, here's an opportunity. If it's good for kids, we'll get some more support, we're all for it, you know, let's just get after it. And as a superintendent, that was great to see all the way across the board. People on the street, like I said, at every board meeting, give an update, they're talking, they're backing, and the staff, of course, have to buy into it, or you're just banging your head on the wall. For me, that was the best part of it, was just seeing that process, all of those factors come together.
And then my last question, was there a, or what was the most difficult part of the process?
Acceptance.
I was gonna say, just getting over the initial process.
I mean, acceptance that we were actually in that situation, that was hard to come to terms with, but it was a short process of denial to just getting on board and trying to move everything forward.
Again, congratulations, and make sure you share that with Luke County. Appreciate it.
Well Rusty, I know you're gonna miss Ms. Barron's and not being there, and I know that you'll work hard at finding a great replacement. But Mr. Sheets, I just wanted to acknowledge to you that when you spoke to us earlier, at the very end, you talked about, it was very obvious that you, as an administrator and as a supervisor, have grown immensely through this process, and had you known then what you know now, how things would be different perhaps. So I really appreciated hearing that, of your growth as an administrator, and how important that leadership is. And thank you for yours, Ms. Barron, and best of wishes on your new assignment.
Any other questions or comments? Again, on behalf of the committee, thank you very much. We had a great opportunity this morning, also at the committee level, to go through the presentation, have a great discussion. And again, we applaud the work that your team has done, your community has done in moving forward. It really is exciting to hear the progress that you've been making over the past few years. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now just continue on with Santee.
That's right. I'm gonna call up President, Board President Moose up to the area here. Thank you so much. So to continue on, we have Board President Moose up here with us, and we actually want to, they have such a large showing here, and I want to make sure that we definitely value them and uplift them. So I'm gonna go ahead and just introduce the community that he has here with us. We have some Santee board members, we have Lissy Swali, we have Cindy Whipple, and Duane Wawashaw. We have some school members, we have Cindy Nagel, who is the elementary principal, we have Tony Hoffman, who's the secondary principal, we have Mary Beal, who's the instructional facilitator, Carrie Garwood Daniels, who's the superintendent, and we have Charlie Bressman, who is the attorney for the school, and we have some community members, who is actually Steve's brother and his wife, Joel and Shannon, so they're here. So thank you so much, all of you all, for being here and showing up to support your community. So we're gonna go ahead and move into the priority school recommendations for Santee Middle School. So to begin, we have two recommendations. The first recommendation is to maintain the middle school, Santee Middle School, in priority status, and pursue a significant revision, excuse me, to their priority plan. And the second recommendation is to add Santee Elementary School and Santee High School as the two new priority schools. The first recommendation, as a quick reminder, after the, excuse me, after a school has been designated for priority school for three consecutive years, the State Board shall reevaluate to determine a significant revision to their plan, entirely new plan, alternative administrative structure, and the rationale for why we are pursuing a significant revision to their plan is for low student achievement outcomes, which Lane will talk about just in a moment, and then I'll dig into the level of implementation of their progress plan, which is the qualitative process.
Excellent. So the first thing that we want to just point out is that the middle school has actually been at the needs improvement status, again, in this, the most recent classification. And while there have been gains and growth for students in map assessments, it has not translated to student achievement. So this is measured by the NSGAS. So this is a snapshot of our NEP, and you'll see that actually that there are stars, and we want to make sure that you understand why that is masked there, is for one of two reasons, either that there are fewer than 10 students in the student group, or that there are fewer than 10 students that scored in a particular performance level.
So here we see the qualitative review of their progress plan, specifically around the goals. Goals, again, are the actions, the outcomes that the school is trying to achieve. And for 2016 to 2018, we see that 60% of their goals were emerging and 40% were operational. And while the school did take an initiative and say that they wanted to add some additional goals specifically around MTSS, we see that their still, their goals remain in emerging and operational for now the third consecutive year. And as a reminder, the strategies are the key activities and actions that the school and school community will take, so that they can ensure that they are achieving their goals. And what we see here is that there has been just a wide variety and some fluctuation in terms of the implementation of each of the strategies to then achieve those goals. So we see that the number of strategies that are not evident from when they entered priority status has actually increased from 7% to 18%, while there's been also a slight increase in highly functional from 11 to 15, but the majority are remaining between all of the categories, emerging, operational as well.
We wanted to share with you our second recommendation, which is to add Santee Elementary and Santee High School as priority schools as well. So looking at 2017 and 18 AQuest classifications, we see needs improvement status across the elementary, middle, and high school, as well as the district being classified as a needs improvement district. And we see, again, low student achievement outcomes across all three of those schools. And then in particular note, we also saw the opportunity through the identification of schools for comprehensive support and improvement, and Santee High School was identified for that support as well. And that was a result of that low graduation rate of 35%. And then the last piece here is that as a district, we see around 50% chronic absenteeism for all students in the district.
This is just our NEP snapshot, again, sharing with you. So another thing to support this recommendation, we have, again, we want to share with you in totality the goals and strategies here, as we are seeing that this formalization of the elementary, the revision of their middle school plan, as well as the addition of their high school, will allow for us to develop a shared responsibility around concrete goals, and have clear structure and alignment across the entire school system. We also see that integrating their CSI plan, as well as their revision plan into their high school, will enable some of the, will stabilize some of the fluctuation we've been seeing as a result of attempting to do too much across one plan. It'll definitely be beneficial that way. So some of the next steps that we've outlined here for the Santee Community Schools is that we've come here to present to you the State Board, take action on those recommendations in June, and then come forward in August with some revised plans, as well as a new plan for the school in August. And some of the continued support, so as mentioned, the instructional facilitator, which is actually provided through NDE Financial Support and ESU One, to continue that support, as well as the structured support through the NE MTSS Planning and Support Process, and any contracting consulting services that we may want to pursue to support the school moving forward.
And so with that, we would just pause and ask if there are any questions about our two recommendations.
Could I add some, just a couple more points of context? And first of all, it's really good to have Steve here, and as I mentioned to the committee, I don't know how many meetings and conversations I've had with Steve and the other board members as well over the last three years. You know, among the struggles that I think that we continue to have to find, kind of the appropriate improvement results that we all want to see, and I would say all, everyone from the Santee community wants to see those results as well, is kind of the alignment pieces, ensuring that we are thoughtful about what happens from early childhood all the way through high school graduation. And so in particular, on recommendation two, we feel it's important to figure out how we can make sure that alignment is taking place all throughout the school district and throughout that setting. So it's not intended to be anything other than, we think that alignment, we think we can think of different resources. We did select at the time, when we selected Santee, the middle school, for a reason. There was actually a specific conversation that we knew that there was probably, you know, kind of a K-12, at least a K-12 perspective that needed to happen, but we could only select so many priority schools at that point in time. We selected the middle school with some strategy there, thinking that if we could do some work around the middle school, it would have an impact at elementary, it'd have an impact at high school. I think now, given the change in the law, the opportunity to look at that more holistically, and I don't think there's anyone that thinks from our team, or even from the Santee team, that we haven't been trying to work in that K-12 space already. It's really been important to do that, but this gives us a way to look at that a little more holistically, and I think that's one of the reasons for the recommendation on recommendation number two, anyway. And, you know, it's been powerful work. We've learned a lot, I think, collectively, the importance of really kind of building the winning team altogether, has been one of those things we continue to work on and figure out. And again, I, you know, I'm very impressed. I hate to say it, you know, we sit here and go, well, we're recommending continuing. We've seen progress in certain things in Santee. We haven't seen it yet in the academic side. I think someone mentioned, whether it was Cindy, or Tony, or somebody mentioned that we've established a bit of a foundation for how that process will work, and I think that's really important. So I actually do want to give credit to all of the hard work that's gone into this effort, the hard work that Steve and the board has done, the hard work that others have done. And I think we all know kind of the areas that we have to continue to get better in, and that's certainly our intention with this recommendation.
And Mr. Moose, I didn't know if you wanted to share anything yet, also, and make sure...
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to take all this in right now, and I'm just trying to listen to everybody, but like I said in the committee this morning, the biggest, the two biggest things I'm taking out of here is that the whole, everybody needs to be involved with developing this plan, from your community, travel council, school board, staff, students, everybody needs to be involved with it. I guess there's three. The second one would be finding a way to get our curriculums developed in a timely manner. We've been on priority status for three years now, and we just recently adopted a, or recently approved our reading curriculum for this year, I mean, for next year. Now we got math, science, and everything else coming up, so we just need a better timeline. If we get, if my board, our board can get a better timeline on when we're gonna be getting these, and have that developed into our plan, working with UNL through their MTSS system, and making sure, I mean, the board agreed, my Santee board agreed to work with them. Another particular is KOK, where they're at with developing our administrators, three years now. Our board feels like our administrators should be able to, be able to instructional teach their staff. I think they would have a better outcome of, their principals are actually giving them instructional advice or instructional coaching, whereas you're getting directed from another, out of the building person, if you know what I mean, by that. Other than that, I think, like I said, everybody needs to be involved with this process. Other than that, I think, like I said, everybody needs to be involved with this process. I met Mr. President Weisler this morning, he asked me if anything you can do for me, and my first thing to come to mind was why you can remove us off priority status if you want. But that's, that's something we need to work for and something I think our board and community is hoping to achieve. Hopefully it won't take three years, hopefully it won't take five years, but hopefully it will take a short amount of time to get us to where we need to be, so.
One of the things I'd like to highlight that you mentioned in the, this morning, the team shared with us as well, and that's the work that you're doing using the measure of academic progress or MAP and the growth that you've seen. It may not translate right now into growth in NCAS formerly. I'm with you, Rusty formerly. But it, it really was heartwarming to hear about some of the progress when you look at it from an individual student growth perspective. And so I do think, again, there are important things that, that you see as some highlights that are happening, and I think that the recommendations, as we talked about those just a little bit, will continue to provide some structure for support as, as we move forward and move forward together this in a collaborative process. I know, Debra, you had a comment?
And I have so much to learn, but I noticed one of your stats around chronic absenteeism, and I, I think it was 50% in the elementary, and is that, this is two questions, but is that based on students who have missed more than 10 days?
So I can speak to that. So chronic absence is defined as, a student is chronically absent if they miss 10% of their time-
Oh, 10%.
-in membership. So that could be 18 out of 180 days, or it could be five out of 50 days.
Okay, thanks. And I, and, and I know, I mean, there's so many districts focusing on this, and so many reasons why students are chronically absent, but I'm, you know, I, I listen to the urban schools more just because that's my district, and I'm just kind of curious what your conversations are around those numbers and what you're thinking is a cause, or, I, I know that's a big question, but anybody want to speak to that?
I'm gonna invite either superintendent or elementary secondary principal if they'd wanna go ahead and talk to that briefly.
One of the things is, if you look through our data, is our high poverty level-
Sure.
-and I think that contributes a lot to our absenteeism, to our mobility. People are really looking to improve day by day, our families are, and so oftentimes education may not be their top priority. It may be housing, it may be some of those basic needs that we've all heard about, you know, from Maslow's hierarchy and, and everything else, who are education. So we think that that does play a role. But we're working every day to, to help improve that. When we have community functions, we, we feed the community and have them come together around food, that's also part of the Dakota culture, and so.
Rachel.
Are there any other, oh, Maureen?
I thought Steve brought up a very good point earlier this morning when he spoke to us, that the culture at the reservation is much different than the culture for the rest of us. For example, when a community member dies, the community all participates in the service, the ceremony, and so that contributes to some of those absent days. And so we have to think about the culture, and as I always say, we never want to lose sight of our roots. And so I was appreciative that you brought that out today, Steve.
Robin, did you have a, okay, go ahead, Robin.
Good to see all of you. Just say hello to each of you. I'm concerned about us, people around here, that we are doing the right thing, the best thing for Santee. I'm concerned that one size maybe doesn't fit all. It's great to hear the success of Loop County, but it's somewhat difficult to say now we're moving from the middle school to the elementary and the high school. And so I, I question us as to whether, what we are doing, because we believe it to be the right thing to do, that it is indeed the right thing to do. I don't have that answer, and, and so I guess I'm looking a little bit to you to ask that If, if what we've done with the middle school over the last three years has not been as successful as we want, even though we like to say that there has been some progress, and I want to acknowledge that, but I'm, I'm really concerned that the old statement of, what is it, the definition of insanity, and we give a lot of people credit for this definition, you know, continuing to do what we've always done and expecting different results. And so that is, I guess, my question to you. What can we do differently? And I know it probably comes down to, quote, "the plan," but what should be included in this plan that was not included in the plan three years ago? What should we be doing differently? We can talk about improving test scores, we can talk about improving absenteeism, we can talk about the things that have kept us as a priority school, but what, how can we support you in a more productive way to truly help the children of Santee? And I look to you, Steve, but I really, I'm asking anyone-
I'm gonna defer that to Mr. Hoffman, because he was on the board when we, or he was on, he was our principal back then when we first started this process. So he was there from the beginning, so I'd ask him, ask him that question, then I'll give you mine.
Okay.
Mr. Hoffman.
Can you come up, Tony? Just because of the microphone.
Well, you were there from the beginning, so I think what better person to, to see where we're at when we started and where we're at now.
Cheryl? Ready? You're fine, you're just right. I'm sorry. Oh, no, you're great, you can just go ahead and talk.
Thanks, Steve. I think he asked you, but that's all right. I will say the same thing I said in committee this morning. Number one, the support's been tremendous. All of the help, what we've had available to us, everything from special ed to MTSS, all of the people at NDE and the supports that they've been given, we would not want to give any of that back, I know that. Santee is a very unique community, both culturally, on the reservation, and, mind you, geographically very isolated. So inherently, there are a lot of differences at the Santee Community School District that maybe don't exist at some other districts. You know, without getting specific, I think those are all things that need to be looked at. It's, it's going to need to be a very comprehensive support system that involves the community, the board, tribal council. As an example, we asked NDE for support with our CTE, and revision has now come, we're working on the revision grant, and involving our tribal entities, getting just that piece is going to be big. I'm using that just as an example, and there's multitudes of examples like that that we have to really, you know, it's, it's a small community, but we need to involve everybody. You know, it takes a village. So if that answers your question, but if you have another one.
I, you are the one giving the answer. I don't, I don't know the answer. And so I certainly appreciate what you're saying.
Yeah, and you know what, I, I don't know that I have the answer either, but I, in there, in there lies the answer. You know, I think collaboratively, we can do this.
When we first started this and met for a conversation, when we first talked about the priority process, and I got it, had it explained to me, because I had to explain it to the Santee Board, the gentleman from Loop County mentioned, he was like, wow, we gotta deal with this, we gotta find a way. But then you realize, it's just resources that you're offering us. We gotta come up with the way to get those resources into our school system and make sure we're moving along the way we need to. It's a slow process. I've said from the beginning that the, the, the students that we have in our school now, you're gonna have to, they're, they're set in their ways. Our high school in particular, since we're being added now to priorities, if we get our elementary on board with what we're, what we're offering, that's gonna, it's gonna take some time, but eventually they'll be on board with what we're trying to do there. And Santee will be, so we're only three years into the, what did I say, five years when we first started this? We're five years, we're two years away yet, so that's yet to come up into fruition. Our elementary program is probably, I think, second to none, but you know, there's issues we have there too as well. But once we get our elementary, which I think is on board, move on up to high school, middle school, high school, everything, I think will fall into place. But if we just learn how to use our resources, which is state NDE and all you guys are offering, I think we'll be set. But we need, we just need to be, well, be involved with the whole process, you know, let us know, like, like developing the plan so we know what, what, what our roles are gonna be, community plan, tribal council, the board, all the way down to our staff. So eventually we'll be back to where, or we'll get to where we need to be. That's just our resources, I guess.
Okay. I'm gonna just respond real quick, and then I'll go to Lisa. And I think one of the things I'd like to add to that, that's really why this recommendation that's coming forward that we'll take action on in June is really very important. We actually had a limitation of being able to only identify three priority schools. And so Santee is an example where just the middle school was identified, even though there was work being done, the same with Loop County, even though there was work being done for the full system, there really wasn't recognition of the three schools in Santee that are impacted by this process. So moving forward, there's an opportunity to, in June we'll take action to expand Santee to actually be three priority schools, and give an opportunity to continue the partnership and expand the direction of need on elementary, middle, and high school. And so even though the data that we sometimes look at may not be showing things we want to see right now, it's understanding the story of progress and changes that are being made that really benefit the kids in Santee, and this is our opportunity to continue to work in that process, rather than like pull a rug out or try to start all over in some different way. To me, this is really more about, it's an evolution to a system of the three schools that we can work with to make a difference. So, and again, I applaud everyone from Santee who've been committed to make a difference here. Yes, Lisa?
Well, I just want to thank both schools. You have great representation aboard, administrator, everything, but a couple of things that I've heard today dealt around getting the, the entities together that need to be to make a difference, and that's the, you know, the students, the teachers, administrators, community, tribal. And when you have that happening, I think great things are gonna start to happen, and you have to remember, looking at, at history of a lot of things, it takes time. And I, I'm sure you're frustrated that after three years, you, you're thinking we've only gotten this far, but keep track of that growth. Look where you were in some areas, might be non-academic, but look where you were when you started versus where you are now. And I think one of the best things that I've also heard today, besides it's taking the whole community to make a difference, is that elementary foundation of where you're wanting to go, so that school culture and your culture will all infuse together as they get older for future generations. It's kind of like planting the, the seed of a tree, you know, how long does it take before you finally have the shade and all of that benefit for so many generations to come? So I think you're on the right path. Don't get frustrated, just know that you're making a difference slowly but surely if you all stick together, like you, you're saying you know you need to do. So thank you for being here, both schools.
So with that, I don't think there's any, oh, John, okay, just real quick summary then, again, as we've all said, thank you for being here, but in June, the committee will move forward with recommendations for the full board to take action on, and those recommendations will be for Loop County to be removed off the priority school status. Loop County Elementary, I believe, is the school that technically was on, so when I say Loop County, I should specify which school. And then the recommendation for Santee will be to maintain Santee Middle School and add Santee Elementary and High School, and that will then involve the development of a new plan that will come back to the board for approval at a later date. But again, those will be the two recommendations this committee will have for us to take action in June, so be thinking about it. If you have questions over the next month, don't hesitate to talk to someone in the know, that would not be me, talk to someone in the know, to Lain or Shirley. So please feel free to formulate any questions you have, we will be taking action in June. Thank you again so much for being here today.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel. With that, the board will take a 10-minute break.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We will now reconvene. Commissioners report an agenda overview, consent agenda. Dr. Bloomstead?
Yeah, first of all, get resettled here. So now to start the rest of the meeting. The consent agenda process, just like normal. So if you have a question on something on consent agenda, you can fill out that pink form and put it in front of the box by Scott there. I mean, if there's just some other questions that we can also help resolve or address for you, we'll organize to do that. Kinda next up is looking at the, I'll get organized, the report on rules. And so in your, in your system, you'll have a report on the current rules. So we have rules 91 and 92, waiting for approval by the governor. And then we have some rules approved for hearing drafts. We have rule 11, rule 20, and rule 23. All of those, well, rule 11 dealing with early childhood programs, rule 20 with teacher education programs, and rule 23 with basic skills competency. And those have all been topics that have been in front of us for a while. And hopefully, at least, the hearing process, and this is still one thing that I anticipate we continue to have to work on, but figuring out what the rule process, or what we found out, find out in the hearing process. I'm less worried about entering a hearing and coming back and starting over if we find other things from the hearing process. But the importance of getting that engagement through the hearing processes is part of that effort. So anyway, so that's a quick update on that particular front. Ryan, did you have some items? So I'll have Ryan go ahead and come up as well.
I wanna take an opportunity to recap the NASB Legislative Conference. I know that five of you were in attendance at that conference, legislative committee members, and then Rachel Wise as the Chair of NASB, to highlight some topics that were discussed at that conference to keep top of mind, and where I see topics coming before the board in the coming months. And then to share some of the resources associated with those that were shared at the conference. So on the first opening session that was held with the Council of Chief State School Officers, or CCSSO, the opening speaker was Hadi Partovi. I might have mispronounced his name. And he is the founder, I believe, of Code.org. And one of the messages from that was around computer science. And so I think being aware of what's happening on the national landscape with respect to computer science, I think one of the things that was shared from that that resonated with me is that computer science is more than coding. And so keeping an awareness of what's happening with national policies related to computer science. Another topic was around social, emotional, and academic development. And Tim Shriver, who is the son of Sergeant and Eunice Shriver Kennedy, has been a great partner with NASB. Rachel was on a panel with him last year, and he was there again. And his organization has some great resources, or an organization he's affiliated with the National Commission on Social, Emotional, and Academic Development. And they've published a document, From a Nation at Risk to a Nation at Hope. And so I'd point you in the direction of that resource that we can help you with, or that's available through NASB. Also, a policy agenda in support of how learning happens. And so we continue to hear about social, emotional learning. And I think the connection there was connecting that with academic, social, emotional, and academic development. We talked last month about student voice and shared some information with you around student advisory committees. And so the notion of student voice continued to be a topic that many state boards are interested in. And I shared that policy brief from NASB with you last month. Another great resource is, we talk about aligning things a lot. And so I really appreciated this resource from the College and Career Readiness and Success Center at the American Institutes for Research on an analysis of ESSA, Perkins Five, IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, and WIWA, the Workforce Innovation and Opportunities Act. So this document provides a nice analysis, or synthesis, rather, of some commonalities in those policy opportunities. And so as we think about where we're at with ESSA, and thinking about Perkins coming forward, and in the future, IDEA and WIWA, how those intersect. And so this could be a good resource to review in preparation for those policy decisions. And then I think I mentioned in the work session that the, that we had, that you had appointments with Senator Sasse's office and Senator Fisher's office. And the members of the Legislative Committee shared some thoughts around the Higher Education Act and the IDEA proposed revisions. And so those were some nice conversations to have. And I think really having the Legislative Committee there really makes a lot of sense. And taking forward whatever those priorities are that are established at this level, and extending those to whatever those are at the federal level appropriately. So, any of those resources that I've put up in front of you here, if they're not familiar to you, you connect with me and we can put those in front of you. Another thing that I wanna share with you, and you probably got this email from NASB today, and this was announced at the conference, is that NASB is rolling out a new awards program that will honor middle school teachers who are civic engagement champions. So the National Teacher of the Year Program is sponsored by CCSSO, the Council for Chief State School Officers. And so NASB, as a partner organization, is really looking at modeling this civic engagement champions program off of the National Teacher of the Year Program. And I'd say they're piloting the program to start. And so this year, they're going to recognize and make awards to four teachers from states that they've already identified in each of NASB's four regions. So Maryland, Massachusetts, Illinois, and Washington. You can see how that works from west to east, or east to west. And then they intend to expand that. And so those recipients will be recognized at the conference in Omaha in October, and they'll receive a $5,000 award. So I look forward to that. And of course, that really intersects too, as conversations in this state continue around civic engagement, civic readiness, termed lots of different ways. So pay attention to that email that's probably waiting for you in your inbox.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Dr. Ford.
We will now move on to standing committee reports. Committee Chair Patricia Tim is unavailable due to the fact she's at a national early childhood conference. I will report on the Policy Committee meeting. This morning, Rachel Wise, Deb Narian, and myself met as a policy with our NDE staff members. The Policy Committee had two consent agenda items. After discussion, the Policy Committee would like to postpone any action on State Board Bylaw B-13 rule development, and request that this consent agenda item be pulled from the business meeting tomorrow. The Policy Committee will bring this bylaw back to the full board at a future date, so that more detailed discussion of the internal rule review process can be presented. Consent agenda item adopt proposed non-substantive revisions to State Board Policy P2 Board and Staff Relations. The Policy Committee completed their four-year review and recommended that the full board reaffirm this bylaw tomorrow as a consent agenda item. In regards to the Policy Committee, had one discussion item, and that was to discuss legislative and regulatory priorities. At the Legislature Committee Chair, Miriam Nichols, requests the Policy Committee members to discuss the legislative and regulatory priorities that were adopted by the State Board on October 2018, and the committee's input for the same. The committee discussed how position statements intersect with regulatory priorities, and will offer thoughts on draft language to the Legislative Committee. And that is the report from the Policy Committee. Any questions? Seen, heard, none? Vice President Nichols, please report on the Legislative Committee meeting, please.
We worked on, we relooked over our agenda, our legislative agenda for this next year, and we are right where we're supposed to be. And our plan for the June meeting is to bring a draft of our legislative priorities to you, and regulatory priorities to you at that time to look at. And so we'll share the outline of our events for this year then, as well as the priorities. Other than that, I'm gonna ask Brian Halsted to come up and update us on legislative news going on.
Good afternoon, Brian Halsted, Deputy Commissioner. Today, the legislative- Good afternoon, Brian Halsted, Deputy Commissioner. Today, the Legislature completed their seventieth Legislative Day. They are off until next Tuesday, when they will start work on a lot of big ideas. They have, next Tuesday afternoon, debate to start on the property tax reform package that many of you have been reading about. The Legislature on Wednesday intends to start general file debate on the biennium budget bills, which would include the department's budget for the next two years. So, next week is a full week of work, when they return on some major items that I'm sure everybody will be watching. You have attached in Spark, an update as to the status of all of the bills that the State Board took positions on. As of April 30th, there has been one change since that document was attached, L.B. 570, that Senator Walz has, that deals with coming up with a plan to address the Olmstead decision. That bill today moved to final reading. So, that's the only change in the status of bills. So, at this point, we're all going to be watching, and most likely, some of us working long hours before we see you again in June, when the Legislature will have adjourned. But, that's where the Legislature's at. That's where the status of bills that you've taken positions on are at. And I'll stop there and see if Ms. Nichols or others have questions.
Anyone have any questions for Brian? Seeing none, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, Committee Chairperson Patricia Tim is unavailable due to her commitments with early childhood development. I will report on the Commissioner's Appraisal Committee meeting. Tomorrow morning, the Committee will meet, Rachel Wise and Mr. Robin Stevens. And our Committee goal, mission, is to discuss the process for going into executive session later on that morning, to, if you will, look at the appraisal results from 2018 to 19. We will discuss the appraisal results, after which time, we will talk about and discuss his contract, and a few other issues regarding the appraisal. Also, later on in June, after we discuss the contract in June, our June meeting, we will vote on his contract, as we discuss tomorrow at executive session. Do I have any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on. Lisa Fricki, please report on the AQuest Teaching and Learning Domain Committee meeting.
Be glad to. Action Item 3.4A is a request to grant the Commissioner authority to contract with an individual to work in the area of teacher and educational leadership support. And Kim Snyder is going to come forward and give us some details. Thank you, Kim.
I'm Kim Snyder, the Director of Teacher and Principal Support. And we are asking you to grant the Commissioner the authority to contract with someone to, from this May through July of 2020. Back in 2016, the CCSSO group invited Nebraska and nine other states to be a part of a group that would partner with the Council of Great City Schools, and with the National Urban League, and with the Wallace Foundation, to work with their ELLC group. ELLC stands for the ESSA Leadership and Learning Community. The purpose of that group was to work with those ten states to help them determine the best use of their funds to support educational leaders in their schools' districts. So, through those ongoing conversations, the NLLN was formed, which is the Nebraska Leadership and Learning Network. So, the person who would be hired in this position would be working with the NLLN as they roll out the work that has been ongoing with supporting leaders in Nebraska's needs improvement schools, and then eventually scaling that out to reach all of Nebraska's public school districts. So, that would be part of it. The second part of the responsibilities of this person would be working with the Educator Effectiveness AQuest tenant. There's been a lot of discussions with you with the strategic plan work, and a lot of equity conversations with us here at the Department. And the Nebraska Teacher Principal Performance Framework, which is the Nebraska state model right now, just needs some revision and some improvement to make sure that it's updated to fit what our needs are, and what your supports can withhold. And so, that's what this person would be doing. The reason we're going with an external contractor, the Wallace Foundation has provided us with a lot of support, both in being thought partners with us, a lot of time and energy with us, and some funding. And they're not going to be around forever, unfortunately. So, we are hoping that this external contractor position would help us transition, as we move from the Wallace support that we have now to not having them, to eventually, hopefully, move this into a full-time position. I know we're dealing with some PSL issues right now, but hopefully, we can get beyond that and have something in place when the Wallace Foundation support leaves us.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Any comments from the Committee, and then we could go on to questions?
Just real quickly, Commissioner, if you wouldn't mind speaking a little bit to the PSL issues, because that does impact another item coming later.
Yeah, in fact, I appreciate the opportunity to do that. PSL, just kind of for general terms, Personnel Service Limitations. It's actually, an approach has existed in Nebraska for a long time. I don't know exactly when it started. But we actually are limited by the appropriation process and the budget process within the Legislature, to say we can only use X number of dollars for permanent positions in the agency. And that just kind of happens over time. And we've been in this kind of fixed world for quite a while. Well, because of some of the things we've talked about with the Board of building internal capacities at the agency, we've always been right up against that limitation. So, we've been thoughtful about, every time we have a vacancy, that we think about how we convert that vacancy to a position that's about our strategic plan, or about the work that we have ahead of us. Well, we're out of that wiggle room, is what I'm going to tell you. We're not, that kind of relies on the right things falling together where you can get a position hired. We actually put into our budget this year, in fact, what I testified for, what you adopted last fall, was approximately, and I don't remember the exact dollar figure, but approximately a million dollars more of PSL. Some of that work would have included positions to work specifically on AQuest, our anticipation of how we might be able to implement everything underneath ESSA to support schools, thinking about the kind of permanent positions that we have to run AQuest. In fact, part of what we've tried to move forward with was building some of our data and research capacity in-house. So, there's this particular item, and I don't remember the item numbers, coming up, I think, in strategic planning, where there are two of these, and I would actually be preferring to be in a position asking you to hire permanent staff. But we're not in a position where we can do that with those positions right now. I will tell you, I was going to mention it while Brian was up here for the legislative side. I've had conversations over the last couple of weeks, I will say, maybe it's a little longer than that, still seeing where we stood with the budget process in the Legislature, hoping that the Appropriations Committee might include that recommendation in the budget. As I understand, today, that is not part of that. I will be going and asking a couple Senators to champion this cause. I actually think it's, I talked to one Senator, and he said it just made sense that they would do this. Why are they keeping us in a position? Because, quite frankly, when we go to do contracts, it usually costs us more than thinking about the permanent capacity of our work. And so, that was the thoughtfulness in which we'd put into the budget before. We continue to have to ask that question of the Legislature, and find a way that we can convince them to have that. This position being a good example of one of those that we would definitely prefer that would be a staff position at the agency. But in the meantime, the work is going to persist, and we feel like moving forward with a contract at least puts us in position to keep the work moving forward. So, that's my short answer, Rachel. And that wasn't that short, but thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Any questions? Robin?
Just to follow up with the Commissioner. Okay, so, there's a limit on what we can spend on personnel at NDE, okay? Then, is there a limit on what we can spend contractually through NDE? In other words, does that same restriction apply to those that we contract?
I'm going to say, it depends, right? On one side of the equation, obviously, if we don't have resources for it, we can't do that. All of our money is budgeted to us. And so, obviously, if we have resources available, we can use it that way. There is kind of uncertainty, I won't call it uncertainty per se, how you contract with people matters, too, right? So, if you do a contract where they're essentially an employee of the agency, those things may actually count against us for PSL. And so, we have to manage that side of the equation as well. But on the overall, it's a matter of how much money is available to us, if that makes sense.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. You know, I just encourage you to do everything that you possibly can to build this in-house capacity. I think we've got some fabulous people here. We just need to expand on their expertise, by getting good people in here. I'm really all for this building in-house capacity. Good luck.
Thank you. And I appreciate your support for that, too. I mean, and I will say, our staff works awfully darn hard, all the time to manage these things. And getting some additional capacity around this key work is really going to be important for us as an agency.
Thank you, Robin. Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Jeremy came to our Committee last month and shared the assessment situation. So, he presented on assessment contracts. So, this month, we are being asked to approve the contracts. So, unless there are any other questions for Jeremy, than were asked last month, we can move on to our vote tomorrow. You're off the hook, Jeremy. All right, moving on to Action 3.4B. You weren't planning to come up, were you? No, okay. I just want to make sure I didn't mess up. Okay, it's for the Northwest Evaluation Association Contract. Are there any additional questions about that contract? If not, we'll move on to vote on that item tomorrow. Action 3.4C is for the Data Recognition Contract, DRC. And are there any questions about that contract? Seeing no questions, we'll move on and vote on that tomorrow. And Action Item 3.4D is for the ACT Contract. And are there any additional questions on that? Yes?
We just skipped over quite a few millions of dollars. And for some reason, I just feel like I have to say something. Because that's significant dollars in each and every one of those. And I don't know if I'm, well...
Yeah, we've had it on Spark, and recent it last month. But I understand, if you can encapsulize what, just remind us a little bit about what we learned last month.
Sure. So, there wasn't, all three contracts are for basically about the same amount as they were the previous year. The NWA contract looks like it's about a million dollars more. And that will only be in the case if that science waiver doesn't go through. Otherwise, all three of those contracts are very comparable to the previous years and what we've done. So, you know, continue to work on making sure we're not accelerating or spending more on all those contracts. But in general, there is money definitely behind the processes that we have for making sure we have good, technically, sound assessments.
Specific question?
Just a recognition. There's a person who's here every month, and I always ask her, how's things going? So, I do, but I do appreciate the fact that, Jana, is that correct, that you do come here? And yeah, I just appreciate that. Guess I don't see anybody from ACT. I don't see anybody from DOR, or wherever else. So, it's kind of, once you get this contract, do you continue to show up, or what'll happen? All right. But no, thanks. Thanks for coming here and answering my stupid questions.
Rachel.
And I just want to follow up. And I do really appreciate, Robin, your comments, not stupid questions, comments, and reminders. But I do appreciate what we have in place, that we have thirty days from the presentation to think about it before we take action. So, I do really appreciate the presentation from last month, and the time between the presentation and then this month to take action.
That's a good point, because he comes to the Committee and answers all of our questions. And then, it comes before the Board. And that thirty days to kind of look things over and kind of assimilate that in our minds to move on. So, thank you, Jeremy.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Yes, Maureen?
Mine's not a question. But, Robin, I think if my memory serves me correctly, when we were in DC this past month, I believe we might have met her boss. And she only had exemplary things to say. And we let her know that she's here every month. So, keep up the good work.
All right. Well, thank you, Jeremy.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. So, for a discussion item, Dr. Epler provided the Committee with a draft copy of the Nebraska World Language Standards, which are publicly available on Spark. So, you may look at those at your convenience. These standards will come back to the Committee at a later date. Also, the Committee discussed rules twenty and twenty-three have been revised, and will be coming before the Committee in June. And during this time, we also had a broader discussion about the need to look at rule revision process, try and get that into a rotation. So, we also discussed some legislative and regulatory priorities around early childhood. And so, that's all from our Committee. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Is that all, ma'am?
Yes.
Very much, ma'am. Patsy Co. Johns, please report on the AQuest Student Success and Access Domain Committee meeting, please.
Sure will. I'll do that. This morning, we had two action items and two discussion items. 3.5A, action item, was to approve interim program schools appearing on the accompanying list to operate for the 2019-2020 school year under Rule 1892 MAC-18. And if you have any questions about that, Don Losky's here. He would answer those questions. But we were ready to approve. The Committee reviewed the information, submitted for the approval of the interim program schools under the provision of Rule 18, and recommends the approval of this item for Board members. No questions? No questions. Okay. 3.5B, action item, was to approve funding recommendations for the federally funded support for improvement SFI plans and applications. And Diane, there you are, I was heading for you. Diane is here. At last month's meeting, the Board received information from Diane on the support for improvement grants. This month, a list of eligible applicant schools is presented for approval of these funds. The Committee recommends approval of this item. Board members? Any questions on that? Okay. Thanks, Diane, for coming. Thanks, Don, for coming. Okay. 3.5C, discussion item, to discuss the draft of the Equity Lens and the Position Statement S1 on the nondiscrimination and equal education opportunity in schools. The Committee plans to meet in the next couple of weeks to discuss this item further, in order to give this agenda item the necessary time for discussion. In the future, the Committee intends to bring forward an Equity Lens for Board adoption, as well as reviewing the Position Statement S1 on nondiscrimination and equal education opportunity in schools, and making recommendations on the Position Statement back to the Policy Committee for review. Board members, are there any questions? Or, all right, thank you. 3.5D, discussion item, discuss revision Rule 11. Melody H... Melody Hobson shared the draft revision of Rule 11 with the upcoming hearing scheduled for Wednesday, May 22 at 10:00. And the state board, the committee encourages board members to review the draft revision of Rule 11 with anticipated action to the board at the next meeting, at the June meeting. So, board members, do you have any questions about that? Make sure you look it over. This concludes the committee report.
Thank you very much, Patsy. Thank you very much, ma'am. I will report on the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. This morning, Jane Udomar gave an overview of the budget update. No issues were noted on the educational administration portion of the budget, although several variances for the prior year were discussed and explained. It was also noted that educational aid was consistent with the prior year amount. No issues were denoted. In regards to a committee discussion item, department budget information, Bryce Wilson and Jean Udomar provided a brief overview of the proposed budget, which includes an increase of $350,000 for salary and benefit increases, and $53 million for state aid and ESU aid. Additionally, NDE covered the anticipated changes in the appropriation committee recommendations that will be released today. Discussion in the committee was had on how much our budget is passing through and what level the legislature determines how our funds will be allocated. Those were all discussed within the committee. Thank you. With that, Dr. Rachel Weis, would you please report on the Strategic Planning, Performance, and Improvement Committee meeting, please?
Thanks, John, if you have to. The first action item, 3.7. A, is to contract for services and continuing support for priority schools and other schools designated for improvement. And Brad, there he is, is gonna come up and just talk a little bit about this particular action item, and it does dovetail with our previous conversation on PSL. So Brad?
Yes, thank you, good afternoon. I'm basically recommending that the board grant Commissioner the authority to contract for temporary employment with an individual yet to be named for a period beginning on or after August 1st of this year, 2019, through July 31, 2021, for services and continuing support for Nebraska priority schools and other schools designated for improvement. With the, as you heard previously, with the recent changes in law, now we have the opportunity to name at least three priority schools, that in combination with the designation of CSI, or Comprehensive Support and Improvement Schools, that we did this last year, and also this next year, this next school year, we're looking at targeted support improvement, or TSI designations, and additional targeted support improvement designations also. So in effort to support those schools, as we're designating that improvement piece of it, we're looking to build internal capacity, and we're also looking to remove our reliance upon external contractors and that ability to build capacity. That in combination with the PSL issues that were discussed earlier, we're looking to do this through a contract at this moment because of the situation that we're in. The dollar amount also, I want to note that it is a two-year, or up to a two-year ability to contract, so if you look at the dollar amount, it may look large, but that's also then cut in half because of that length of time.
Are there any questions for Brad? Lisa?
I just wanted to reiterate what Robin had said and what you had just said. I like the fact that we're looking at more positions from in-house. That has been something that, you know, we've talked about in budget cuts or restraint, but I firmly believe we have the expertise among our employees to do more of the in-house. I think it just, it just seems more appropriate to me, so thank everybody who's working in that direction.
Yes, Patsy?
Do we have a timeline for when we will do that process of turning this over to our own, our own staff instead of out-of-house?
I think some of it depends upon PSL and how we can handle that transition process. I think some of it is a little legislative conversation that the Commissioner had addressed previously. So there's a variety of factors that come into it. As soon as some PSL levels, I think, are identified and freed up, I think we can then start that transition process. But we're having to use this process right now, which is tied our hands, but it sounds like we're working on those other methods, but a specific timeline, I don't have that because of other parts of the process that we don't have clarity on.
When would, when would you think that you would start to create that process?
It might make sense for me to address it.
Yeah, there you go, that's great.
And I'll, I'll try, and then you keep asking me questions until it's clear enough. First of all, I mean, this is part of that effort, actually, to start that process. What we're really doing is saying, bringing someone in-house based on a contract as best we, as best we can, right, to start to move and identify folks that might be able to do that. Within our budget, the proposed budget that was in front of the legislature, we actually asked for five people to be part of this particular work, and if they will give us the PSL, we can start to use federal funds and existing funds to do some of those transitions to have permanent staff doing that work. I would actually tell you, I mean, I don't think we've had a public announcement necessarily, well, with the board anyway, Shirley Vargas, for instance, right? Maybe we talked about that last month, that, you know, Shirley's gone, she's actually been here as a graduate student, we should have applauded her, she's gotten her approval of her doctor, and I don't know when she graduates officially, coming, coming up. Anyway, that's, that's one example of bringing someone in-house, her skills, I think, to work around priority schools is important. This contract would be another person that we would hope to bring in-house as part of that process as well. I'm not gonna say that this strategy removes completely the need for outside contractors because we're looking at working with approximately, what is it, 28 CSI schools, comprehensive support and improvement schools, but we're trying to be able to use federal funds to build permanent capacity within the state for, for our model for, for improving schools, improving needs improvement, improving priority schools, and then obviously, under the federal law, too. So over, if the legislature would have just said, here's your five people, we'd be moving on five people right now. But that's not what they've said, so I'm gonna have to gradually do it as we have availability to do that within our budget.
Would we ever, ever take all of the schools that qualify for priority schools? That would be almost impossible.
Well, we gotta decide which ones qualify for priority, right? So, you know, I, when it says, where it used to say no more than three, that was somewhat at the time going, what's this even need to look like, and what's that process need to look like? I do think the recommendations that were coming forward, especially as a related Santee is a smarter process for us, if we're identifying a small school. We're really identifying the district, right? I mean, but in this case, it makes sense to try to make that a collective activity. Those things also need to be aligned with what I think our future Rule 10 is, right? How are we gonna align Rule 10, and I know the board's given great insights as to what that can begin to look like. Those systems all have to get aligned, and we're gonna have to have people to do both the work in the school setting, as well as in kind of what I'll call our, our traditional policy review pieces of that school improvement work. So I don't think we ever declare a whole bunch more priority schools, because that's a very different and intensive approach, but we do have the opportunity to declare more, and if we have the capacity to do that, and truly believe that we can help. I think Robin asked a great question, are we really thinking about this the right way? Is this really what's gonna help? And I think what you heard from, you know, Sante's board president, Steve Moose, about, hey, look, this, this person who comes in on occasion versus someone who would be kind of more permanent is a, is a better strategy, so we're trying to look at ways to accomplish that to make a real difference. I wish I could tell you we could accomplish that next year, right? Unfortunately, and with budget, even with the budget authority, it'd take us some time to find the right people. But my strategy, right, wrong, or otherwise, and what I'm asking you to approve in this, is I'd rather make some strides toward that than wait until the legislature, well, we can't do it now because you didn't give us that, that proper authority. I'd rather use the authorities that we have and start moving us in that direction, and hopefully, we can make the case as we go forward.
Thank you very much for that explanation.
Rachel?
Yes, John?
Thank you, ma'am. I'm just kinda curious, in regards to the services rendered, contractor versus in-house, what are the expenses? Are they about equal if we went in-house versus contractor? Or in-house more? What's the, in regards to cost? You see where I'm going, sir?
Can I, maybe I'll, I'll try to address this once Brad doesn't have...
Commissioner.
I'm gonna hand off the tough questions to Brad as well. No, I mean, it's a great question. That's, that's very much our intention here, too. The reason that this one's shaped the way that it is, we believe that getting someone full-time dedicated towards this compared to a contractor, I would generally say, and I don't probably have any evidence to back this up, but I would generally say, when we look across the agency and we're hiring contractors, they probably cost us three times the amount that, that a, that a permanent employee is. And now, that might make sense for certain work, I'm not, I'm not saying that doesn't sometimes make sense, but once the work becomes permanent, once the work is what we're gonna be doing for a long period of time, this is a lot more efficient with, with those sources. I will also tell you, this puts us in a better position using federal sources, and I, we've been cut from a state general funded side of the equation fairly substantially. I mean, I, and we're given the room to be somewhat flexible with how funds might work, but we're starting to use a lot of the federal funds meshed together, because our plans have been meshed together, but accomplishing state functions as well with federal dollars, right? We're balancing all those different things out and trying to serve our schools the best way possible. So when I go to DC, and you've been there too, right, the, the reality is, is they say, be creative, be creative, be creative. Well, that's actually not the message that typically comes from accountants. I don't mean ours, I mean federal accountants. They're saying, no, you need to time cert where you're spending particular time on certain functions, right? So with contracts, it costs us more, but we can say, well, they're all, they're only working on, on that particular project.
Or this period of time.
For a period of time. The benefit of having permanent employees is they can time cert, so if we're using federal sources, we can time cert for that, but because they're, they're fully employed by us, we get the full benefit of a person's expertise that can be used in multiple ways.
For a long period of time to accrue benefits.
And so, so I, I think our probably, our most, at least one example that I know the board was interested in was the psychometrician position, right? We've actually hired and had, it took us a long time, we couldn't find anyone for a long time, and we've been lucky to find, you know, Dr. Su, who's here as a, as a psychometrician on our data team now, and I don't know how many times we advertised that, and finally found someone to fill that position. But that, that starts to save us resource on how we've contracted before, and so that's our strategy. It's been the strategy, honestly, since I've been Commissioner, of starting to ask for that. The board's been very supportive of that in the budget process, but we haven't, we haven't won that day or won that, that argument necessarily within the legislative appropriations process, and I, I'm gonna keep pushing, I guess is what I say on that, so.
Any other, yes, Lisa?
This makes me think of something that makes me very angry, and...
Sorry.
No, no, it's related, but every time the legislature mandates something that we have to do, and we don't have the money to flow with that mandate, it's taking away from programs that affect our students. And our main focus is all students across the entire state, and we're having to take funds that would go towards them and their programs that they need to make up for what the legislature's done. To me, that should be against the law. I'm done.
All right, thank you.
Can I just add one? I mean...
No, but the Commissioner's not done there.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, I didn't mean to, I don't wanna leave her completely angry. No, our, our reality is, we're trying to find ways to manage that. Now, I will tell you, across the agency, we make substantial changes of trying to apply resources where we think it best makes sense that we can do that. So the Reading Improvement Act that was passed, right, they, it was, they specified or named a position that didn't even exist at the department, and we reorganized resources in order to put that position in place. Now, I, I think it's good that we have that position in place and hopefully, I think, hopefully hired by, by July 1st, but it does pull away from other resources. And I, you know, that's why we have to keep and figure out how to best advocate and argue for those things, and I'm learning through that process yet, too, but at the same point in time, there's not, there's, and it's important, we, we think of every way that we can handle that and address that, and I'm at least able to articulate, hopefully, that to the legislature as well. Now, Lisa's no calmer, but I try.
Robin's looking at me like he's got, I was gonna say, or can we get back to the agenda, but I guess not yet. Go ahead, Robin.
I just want Member Cojones to define for me when she said in-house versus out-house. I was just a little concerned about that, and maybe you could define that for us.
I think I said out-of-house, but maybe not, but you're from Eustis, you know what an out-house is.
All right, on that note, I am getting back to this committee. Thank you, Brad, very much for leading off this discussion that we've now had, and we'll move on, thank you.
Thank you.
To 37. B, and that's an action item that actually, I believe, we are gonna pull tomorrow, so it will not be on the agenda. We did have a discussion this morning. It is the modification request from Eustis Barnum Public Schools to modify the requirements found in Rule 10, and we've just gotta do a little more research and discussion on that item before we'll be ready to bring it forward. Probably in June, Commissioner, is that correct?
Yeah, we'd hope in June, and I, what I would, what I would say is, based on the committee discussion, the agenda item and the action item, what they would recommend doesn't fit this current action item, so we need to, we need to make sure that we do it properly.
So our committee talked about some recommendations, and they don't quite work yet, so we have to work on it as a committee also, and our committee will be meeting again tomorrow, so we will revisit this tomorrow then, as a, tomorrow after our business meeting as a committee option. Next is item 3.7. C, and that is an action item as well, and that is on the accreditation of ESUs that are a part of Rule 84, and I don't know, Don, do you, do you want me just to go from here? Okay, if not, I'll make eye contact, if questions come up, we may have you come up. But as you know, there is a process, and that's Rule 84, that's used for the accreditation of our ESUs, and each of those ESUs have gone through that process, and you have that information in your notes, and the list of the ESUs that, and all of our ESUs have been in compliance with those expectations and are being recommended for accreditation for the 19, 2019-2020 school year, and that, that will be the action item for tomorrow. From a committee discussion perspective, and we will be discussing this on our list tomorrow for a committee, is to discuss how we will be aligning the review of Rule 84 and the accreditation of ESUs with the work around Rule 10, so that we ensure that as we look at accreditation of schools, that we also are looking at the accreditation process for ESUs and align those processes together. And so that will be another element that we'll be bringing forward at another time period of what it looks like for the timeline for the review and revisions to Rule 84. Are there any questions on the action item 3.7. C for ESUs? All right, wow, this time no comments, great. Okay, we are done with 3.7D and 3.7E, which are the two discussion items that were on Loop County, our priority schools in Santee, and I just wanna quickly reinforce that they will be back next month for action, and that action again is Loop County recommendation, take Loop County off of priority schools, and the recommendation for Santee to add Santee Elementary and Santee High School, as in essence, there will be three Santee priority schools, and a revision of the plan, the priority school plan, that will then come to us at a later date. Let's see, discussion items, we did not spend any time yet on the legislative and regulatory priority discussion. Our committee will be meeting tomorrow, and that will be on our agenda for tomorrow. I think that's everything from the committee. Did I?
Did you discuss 37 and the strategic plan revisions?
Oh, no, thank you, and that's, we're discussing tomorrow. So again, we ran out of time today, and thank you, and we apologize that we, we took so much time into the other committees. The strategic, strategic plan revisions, we did get some input from some of you, thank you very much. Tomorrow, in our committee, we will be compiling some of those suggested changes and those edits. We will get those out to you early, so you'll have a chance to review and take a look at it. Our plan is still to adopt changes in June, so we may have to have just a little more discussion at the work session in June with the anticipated adoption at our business meeting in June. meeting in June on those revisions to the strategic plan. Thank you, Brian, for that memory check. Any other items, committee, Maureen, Patsy, Lisa? And I want to thank all three of the committee members. We had a long meeting this morning, and we've got a little bit of a long committee meeting tomorrow as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, John?
Thank you, Dr. Wise, thank you, ma'am. We'll continue on in regards to board reports, dates, discussion items. Thank you for submitting your monthly report, board members. Reports are linked in Spark, and I encourage you to review each member's report. Tomorrow, we will vote on requests to approve attendance at meetings that took place in the past and were not previously approved. There are six members requesting meeting approvals. The requests for future meeting attendance travel from board members are linked in Spark Meetings. Tomorrow, we will approve the board request for meeting attendance. The monthly board travel expense report is attached in Spark Meetings for your review. And the regularly scheduled meeting of the State Board of Education, where we reconvene tomorrow at 9:00 AM tomorrow morning in this room, and if I could add, the appraisal committee will meet at 8:00 in the committee room C, conference room C. We are adjourned.